Welcome. Thank you all for attending tonight's Fort Mill Town Council meeting. Before we call ourselves to order and do the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to recognize a former Mayor George Shepherd that's joining us this evening on the back row. Thank you all for coming. If you have a cellphone, please silence that phone. We would like to give you our full attention, and to do so, all interruptions should be minimized if at all possible. If you have questions, you would need to have signed this sheet here on the podium to speak before council. We'd be happy to entertain you. Each person that signs in will get three minutes. That is so we can give fair and equitable choice to everyone. So with that, if you would, we're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear God, thank you for everybody that's here tonight. Lord, as we turn the page on a new year in 2019, just be with all of us as we conduct the town's business. In your name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. As was mentioned a few minutes ago, pursuant to Section 246 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter with the exception of personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comment sheet prior to the start of the meeting. Davy, can I have the sheet? Thank you. Thank you very much. Counsel, you have been provided a copy of the minutes for the December the 10th and the November the 26th council meetings. Do you have any changes, corrections, or addendums? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Hearing none. Leave to approve.
All right. Motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. Public comment, the first onboard, George Shepherd.
I thought maybe you came to see how it was done right.
Get him, George.
Probably after January of last year, I do want to come and see how it's done right. We'll leave that alone. My name is George Shepherd. I live at 1095 Palmyra Drive, Tegucay, South Carolina, and I did get my card punched as I came over the interstate. If someone could validate me to go back, I'd greatly appreciate it. Since leaving as Mayor of Tegucay, I became the District Chair of Boy Scouts of America Palmetto Council in York County. And we hold an event every year which is called Women in Scouting where we honor the mothers of scouts. And we invite them to come and because after all, we know it's the mother that takes the child to scouting and puts all the badges on and make sure they get and do all the things that they were supposed to do. And one of my roles was to get at emcee for that evening, and I did. And Mayor Savage graciously came and she emceed the event for all the ladies. So on Thursday night, we had a banquet honoring those who helped us out this past year, and I didn't want to drag Mayor Savage down to Rock Hill one more time. So I'm coming here tonight to extend our appreciation for her and her continual recognition of outstanding youth in our community. And on behalf of the Palmetto Council, I'd like to present you with this certificate.
Goodness, George.
Thank you, my friend.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
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 What George does for scouting, he does for all of us. Scouts are given many opportunities to serve their communities, and they take them gratefully. So thank you so much, George, for you and the entire staff that do so much for us.
You're welcome.
It's great to see you. Thank you.
Well, that was a surprise. He didn't have any fussing to do, did he? Okay. Pierre? Hi. Nice to have you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Pierre Longjevin, and I've been a resident of the Springfield subdivision for the last 11 years at 630 Bannerman Lane. Over the last 12 months or so, I have taken interest in the activities and financial health of the York County Natural Gas Authority. To this effect, I attended several of its board meetings, a yearly public meeting at which there was only one other person in attendance with me. And I had a few meetings with the President of the York County Natural Gas Authority and its CFO, who are here in attendance tonight, to review financial data and obtain answers to various questions I had in mind. As you know, while York County Natural Gas Authority is a relatively small business with less than 100 employees, it nevertheless generates revenues in excess of $60 million a year and is engaged into financing activities including pre-purchase of natural gas supply and debt for over $800 million through Patriot's Energy, Patriot's Financial Authority, and other organizations. The York County Natural Gas Authority is only supervised by its board and not subject to rate approval by the State of South Carolina Public Utility Commission. Therefore, it is important that any member appointed on its board be able to properly monitor, review, make recommendation, and approve measures which will keep this authority not only solvent over the long term but also competitive and responsive towards all its stakeholders. On December 8th, I sent a letter to Mayor Savage indicating my interest to serve as the appointed representative for the Town of Fort Mill on the York County Natural Gas Authority Board. While I am not aware that a Town of Fort Mill form needs to be filled out for that purpose, I nevertheless emailed to Virginia Burgess a filed application for service on the Town of Fort Mill Board, Commission, or Committee and included my resume. I hope that I can count on your support for this appointment and pledge to do my best to properly represent the Town of Fort Mill and its residents, to fulfill my duty with care and accountability in addition to being available to find answers for anyone having questions about the functioning and financial activities of the York County Natural Gas Authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Bill Strickland.
This is just on the old business. We met in December. You asked, the council asked us to do a traffic impact analysis on the 1822, and I did perform the analysis and send it to you in the DOT. If you had a chance to review it.
Yes, and we will be discussing that issue later in our agenda.
Perfect.
But thank you so much for being here and the event that we have questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Brian, is it Volan?
I'm here with Bill, and really the same thing regarding the traffic analysis for which we're going to be discussing that.
Okay. Thank you so much. Al Rogat. Happy New Year, Al.
Happy New Year to you too, all of you. My name is Al Rogat. I live at 1006 Crest Haven Lane in Fort Mill. Other than the past year, which I have only made a couple of meetings, I would say for the last seven or eight years, I was here almost every month. Only two of you that I know of, maybe three, have been on the board that long. So you may or may not be aware that I've been consistently against a lot of the approvals of growth, well, not growth, but development in this town, mainly because of traffic issues. I have not been the only one to speak about this issue. Many other residents have come, said the same thing. We have a problem. It's getting worse. We keep approving new developments, more and more cars, nowhere to go. And one response to me was, well, we can't stop people from doing what they want with their property. However, I am quite angered, and this is a November paper, I wasn't able to be here in December, by this article on the front page of the Herald where the town seems to have no problem being concerned when the businesses are concerned. Our mayor told elected officials and area road planners earlier at the RFATs meeting, she's getting discouraging feedback from major employers. Sensitivity to this is very heightened, she said. Something that's really important that we do something about. Teresa Pickens of Fort Mill, Chairman of the York County Chamber, said, "Traffic is creating a tipping point that I don't think any of us want to see happen with businesses." Well, I'm angry. I'm angry that you can respond when the businesses have a problem, but you couldn't seem to care when the citizens had a problem. And that, to me, is wrong. You represent us. I know you allowed Kingsley to develop, which I was against, and you have 5,000 cars and get them in and out of a two or four-lane road. Now you see. But we told you beforehand that was an impossible situation. Now that the businesses are complaining, you're seeing it's a problem, and you're going to try to find a solution, when we thought it was a problem and told you it would be a problem, fell on deaf ears. That makes me angry. Thank you.
Al, before you sit down, I stand by the quotes in the paper.
Oh, I don't disagree with your quotes.
It's my choice. I stand by them because those business owners carry a great deal of weight with the Department of Commerce, who controls a lot of the options that we have for getting additional funding to straighten out the traffic. We heard your concerns. I heard your concerns, and we're doing what we can to get the power in Columbia to do the things we need. So I'm really sorry that you're angry, but you were heard and you were paid attention to, and we're running the avenues possible to take care of some of that issue.
And to put that article in context, that was the 77 160 intersection.
I live right there.
So to put that in context, because when you read an article like that and you don't put it in context, it can apply to anything, much like our lawyer would say, when you submit something in for evidence, you need to have context behind it so that everybody knows where it is applied from. Okay? Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
This is mainly that area where I live and can't get off my street. I can't go three traffic lights at lunchtime for less than 10 minutes.
I live right there too, buddy. I know exactly what you're talking about. I live right there too.
But if traffic's all over town, that's not the only bad spot, but that's the worst.
Thank you, Al.
And I know you can't do anything because you don't pay for the roads.
No, but we're on the people that do. Mickey Broderick, did I pronounce that properly?
One of you.
She decided not to speak. That's okay. That's all right. Thank you for signing up. Carmen Hamilton.
I misunderstood her.
You can speak for her, can't you?
I might echo some of her concerns, but I live at 1788 North Dobie's Bridge Road. I was here for the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm on the corner of Hare and Dobie's Bridge Road, right where, you know, this project, the Goddard Project, is planned for. And I'm just here once more just to state that our family is against, not the Goddard School, just the proposed location and the access, you know, where it's being planned for. I just don't think it's suited well for the immediate residential area. It's a small cut-through road. I know that, you know, it may be consistent with the town's vision for, you know, what development you all would like to see in that immediate area, but the current use is still primarily residential. A traffic study would not convince us that everything will be just fine, as is, without with a 150-capacity preschool or daycare facility going up. And then there's another one on the corner, at least planned in the planning stages, Williams and Dobie's Bridge, which is not too far, when traffic is not even fine now, in my opinion, as it is, you know, under the current conditions. So it's just too much safety. This is the beginning. You know, safety's going to be a big concern. There's a gravel drive that you really don't even notice from most of the maps, but it's also Hare Road. It is the gravel portion of Hare Road, and there are residents who will come up and have to merge, you know, into or exit onto Hare Road, the paved portion of Hare Road. So there's going to be a lot of parents, students, ballplayers, you know, with the ball fields right there, traveling daily, young drivers headed to and from the new high school, my son in a couple of years. I don't even want to think about that. So we realize the development is coming. There's four corners on the bypass, and, you know, I realize there's services needed on this side of town. I could really use that myself, but it's just backing up, starting too close. It's backing up too close. I just think there's plenty of other options. They may not, you know, be as attractive to a developer. There may be some obstacles to overcome, but I just think this is too tight of an area. The road's too small. I'm not a planner, of course, but that's just my two cents from a resident's standpoint living there. The front piece of that parcel is directly extorted me. If it gets HC zoning, that's our concern, is that with all the property on North Dobie's Bridge from my house on down, you can see it turning over slowly. So it's conceivable to me that that piece could be sold off later and joined with an adjacent HC tract. And then something maybe bigger, you know, under HC could go there. So we just request that you guys give very careful, you know, consideration to it, maybe a lesser zoning class. I don't want to misquote, but I believe Mr. Strickland, you know, he has stated that they would be good neighbors and keep residents in mind, and I do believe that. But, you know, from the standpoint of how it's actually zoned, I would just appreciate any consideration there by the town to help not open the, leave that door open.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Tyler House.
Hi. My name is Tyler House, and I live on 1995 Hare Road, and I'm going to be speaking on behalf of my dad, who couldn't make it tonight.
Good.
So this is his letter that he actually emailed to me earlier. Unfortunately, due to travel business commitments, I cannot attend tonight's meeting in person to voice the continued concerns of your potential decision to grant the request of the Goddard School to be annexed into the Town of Fort Mill and built into our Hare Road neighborhood. Residents surrounding this location are so opposed to this development, not because we are against the Goddard School or some similar daycare center, but because the approval of this will serve to open the door to more and more businesses in an area which up until now has been a peaceful residential neighborhood, when there is much more appropriate bypass highway close by. Please consider, the property fronting Dobie's Bridge Road beside Hare Road is of imminent concern. This parcel each Hare Road resident has to pass on our way home. We do not believe the Goddard School representatives will remain true to their word not to sell or develop, especially since the property beside it has the HC designation, and the property on the other side of that is now applying for HC. Please do not allow this to become the next piece of the puzzle for an even larger commercial development beside Hare Road or the Dobie's Bridge intersection. There is a marked financial difference between being able to tie into town water or sewer versus building a septic and well system suitable for a 180-person facility and having that septic system operated and maintained by a licensed professional. This motivator alone would deter the developer from actually building on this property under York County if their request is denied with Fort Mill. The traffic study was performed before and with no accounting of the development currently underway on the corner of Hare Road and Fort Mill Parkway, nor does it consider the amount of potential traffic pulled into the area by this and another proposed daycare at Dobie's Bridge and Williams Road. Development is imminent and intended along the Fort Mill Parkway. Most of Fort Mill concede and accept that the Parkway will bring commercial growth. We, however, ask the council to what extent they are going to allow this development to encroach upon the residential neighborhoods along Dobie's Bridge Road. Both north and south Dobie's Bridge and the side roads off of them have been residential for a reason and served our town well in that capacity. Please consider allowing commercial growth to develop where it should, along a pass-by highway, not into and beside residential neighborhoods. Even if the council chooses to grant the inclusion of the Goddard property into the town, please don't promote additional commercial aggress even deeper on Dobie's Bridge by granting them an HC zoning and permitting them to sell their .6 acres to the investor beside the property at a later date. We trust that you will continue your dedication to the Town of Fort Mill and the citizens who are proud to call it home. Thank you.
Excellent job. Thank you. Dad would be proud of you, I'm sure.
He informed me at 5:15 that I was coming. I'm not going to lie.
You did a very good job. Thank you for addressing us. Those are all the folks that have signed up for this evening. Thank you so much. We will now begin with presentation number one, a proclamation recognizing January 21st, 2019, as a day of giving and sharing, giving and service, read properly, Gwen, in the Town of Fort Mill, Caroline Hasty.
Hi, Mayor.
Hi. I have it. You want it? Here, darling. There you go. It's up to you. You want to read it? Oh, come on.
Quiet, Nancy.
Since I have such a melodious voice. Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, proclamation recognizing day of service. I'll read it, and then we'll let Caroline lead us through what it really means. How about that? Whereas for the past half-century and longer in this nation, people have joined hands in the service of others, be it to the disabled, the sick, the needy, the elderly, the homeless, the hungry, or disenfranchised, so that all may enjoy the rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas the needs in our nation are as great in this time as in past times, evidenced by the presence of numerous nonprofit social services in our city and larger community. And whereas the support of these nonprofit social services goes beyond financial support and includes a need for hands-on services. And whereas the course history was impacted by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who called a generation to action and services calling all people to work side by side for the common good, putting aside their race, gender, and ethnic origin. And whereas there is opportunity to bring together some of those service needs of our community's nonprofit organizations and those who might wish to devote hours of service to them, and there is a clear cause to do this within the content to honor Dr. King. And now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Gwen Savage, on behalf of the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, do hereby recognize the day honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., January 21st, 2019, as a day of giving and service in the Town of Fort Mill.
Thank you.
Alrighty then. You going to talk to us a little bit about it?
This is our second year honoring Dr. King as part of the Day of Giving. And last year, we had such a huge response that the community really embraced what we were doing as making it a day of giving back. We were so super excited. Mayor and Ms. Trudy came over there, was joining us, and Brown joined us. We had several departments come and gather things up, and it was really awe-inspiring. So I wanted to step into that again. The ladies of the AKAs, they'll be joining us again. The enrichment and center will be bringing their veterans to write letters to servicemen and women.
Awesome.
Yeah, that was very touching and exciting, the people that are embracing this event. Cornerstone Church has called their youth would like to come out and help sort. So it's amazing to me what's coming out. So in honor of Dr. King, we will be writing letters of encouragement to U.S. soldiers that are serving abroad. And as well, they'll be placed together and mailed to a company in Greenville. And Greenville turns around and sends them to the troops, to the platoons, to the units. So whenever those units come in after their day, they're laying on tables and they can receive that encouragement. As well, the food pantry, Fort Mill Food Pantry, and the Dorothy Day Soup Kitchen last year were overwhelmed and super excited, wanted to do this again with us. And they have reached out and given us a list of suggested donations. So we would like to invite our residents and council, of course, to please join us in Town Hall on Monday, January 21st, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We will have some early morning refreshments. I did not bake anything. I'll buy it all. And then we'll have some cards with the town logo on the front so that when our servicemen and women, when they go up to the table where they're at, they'll see all these Fort Mill cards. So pretty excited about that. Now, we do have some classrooms and schoolrooms that are, some students that are writing cards, they're making their own cards, but they'll be gathered with all the Fort Mill cards.
I'd like to congratulate Caroline openly. This was a project that she undertook last year. Every year, we want to do something meaningful, and the meaningful is the word that we strive for. And this young woman, last year, decided meaningful was going to be actionable, that we weren't just going to meet and talk and speak, we were actually going to do something in the spirit of Dr. Martin Luther King's desires, that we serve others. So she put together a program in the Spratt Building last year and asked people to bring canned goods, anything that could be donated. We collected coats. It was a huge success.
Yes.
And it felt good.
Yes.
It felt good because everybody was out of school, so they brought their children. They made their children lug grocery bags in. They made them, you know, separate things. It was one of the better events to collect people in service. And I thank you for your thoughts on that and that we're doing it again this year.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Any questions of Caroline, counsel?
Just reiterating, they don't have to come to Town Hall to write letters. If they've pre-written them, they can just drop them off, correct?
That is correct.
And then all the donations that are made are going to be redistributed back into Fort Mill, or?
That's correct.
So everything stays local.
Well, the Dorothy Day Soup Kitchen is in Rock Hill.
Okay.
But the Fort Mill Church of God, the food pantry, is wanting those. It was really encouraging to me because Dorothy Day Soup Kitchen, they're looking for the hats, gloves, and scarves, and they're needing those. And they really, last year, we had such an overwhelming response to the hats and the gloves and that we reached out to them at the last moment. And, you know, when Brown took them over there, she was just embracing him. So, you know, that was such, when she reached out to us again this year, you know, how can I say, you know, otherwise? So it was, it's very awe-inspiring.
And then for those watching, if they want a copy of this list, they can find it on the website or Facebook?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Next question. Very good. I also read this past week that one of the least donated but most needed items were socks.
That's true.
That they need socks. Those that are less fortunate need socks. So if you want to participate, we'd love to have a better crowd than last year, and it was great.
If I remember from last year, Walmart was sold out of a lot of these items.
Yes, they were.
So go get them quickly so that they will replenish and we can get them again.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it.
Caroline, not so fast.
Yes, sir.
Not only thank you, but just about the other 8,000 things you do during the year.
Thank you.
You're so busy, you had to move out of this building up there.
Brown took me in. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move into old business. Old business item number one, second reading. An ordinance annexing a portion of the property currently or formerly known as York County Tax Map Number 738-5045, formerly York County Tax Map Number 0201201279, containing approximately 4.1 plus or minus acres located at 1822 North Dobie's Bridge Road. This is in Ward Number 4. Mr. Moody, do I have a motion?
I make a motion, accept old business item number one.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Okay. Discussion.
Can we discuss the impact analysis that was done?
Sure.
Yeah.
Chris, would you like to cover the impact analysis, the traffic impact analysis? And then before you discuss the results of that, I think it's important to note the criteria, how they go about doing one, because it isn't just a road count of cars. It literally takes into account projections as well, does it not?
That's correct, Mayor.
That's correct, Mayor. To start a traffic study, the applicant would have reached out to a traffic engineer, and they take the proposed use, this being a daycare school, and there's a national publication that generates the estimated number of trips that would be generated based off square footage for that use. So it creates a model of traffic based off that proposed use and the road network at the location. It does take into account approved developments surrounding the project, in addition to taking into account the approved projects that are moving forward. It does provide a background growth rate for, to account for those projects that aren't in the immediate area but do add traffic to those roadways that are nearby the project. So there was a 6% growth rate for the southern bypass and a 3.5% background growth rate for North Dobie's Bridge Road, along with a small growth rate for a hair road as well. So it establishes essentially a model, and then it projects out current level of service in the area. It then projects out the level of service that's anticipated in the Horizon year, being the year that the Goddard School would be completed, I believe it's 2020. It projects out what that operational level of service would be at the surrounding area in 2020, based off a no-build scenario being that the Goddard School wasn't developed, and then a build scenario, including the traffic that's generated from the Goddard School. And so it provides those three scenarios, existing 2020 no-build, 2020 build, and it basically summarizes, here's where it is today, here's where it is going to be in the future without it, and obviously then with the development. It assigns level of service grades for each intersection. Those grades are A through F, actually A through E, but, you know, generally following the school grades that we are accustomed to. And in the instance here, the traffic generated was, for a weekday, it was 571 trips, 132 in the AM peak, 133 in the PM peak. And based off of that, based off of the background traffic, background growth, the, all of the intersections being North Dobie's at Hair, Fort Mill Parkway at Hair, North Dobie's Bridge at Fort Mill Parkway, and the two site access locations off Hair. They were all, in all scenarios, deemed to generally be in a level of service A or B overall. And some of the peaks there were Cs, and there was one D, but generally speaking, based off York County's standards, which, just for general information, most of Hair Road is actually York County Road, so this was reviewed by York County based off their standards. An acceptable level of service for those intersections is A through D. And so the proposal does meet the acceptable level of service standards based off of York County. So the county did not have any comments based off the study, staff did not have any comments based off the study. Ultimately, the study, to summarize, did not find that there were any necessary road improvements needed to mitigate the traffic based off the proposed development. So there's nothing that's needed to happen to bring the roads up to an acceptable level of service as proposed.
So to take all of that and put it into one sentence, the roads were deemed appropriate and the traffic was deemed non-impact. Is that correct?
Generally speaking, yes, ma'am.
No questions? So I barely make the graduate level statistics with a B, so, but this is simple addition, so maybe I can get it right. So I'm looking here, Chris, on 3.1 trip generation on TIA. So just walk me through this. So you got 132 total trips, weekday peak. How are we get, how do you get to the 285 number? I'm trying to look at, can you get to that based on the other information in this chart? That's what I'm, yeah, yeah, total trips entering, trips exiting, 286, 285. How do, what's the background? Is it to the right?
Yeah, I mean, that's just, that's a rounding issue, I mean, with the study. Not, I don't want to say rounding issue, but a rounding discrepancy based off of, you know, half-trips, you can't really have half-trips, so.
Because I mean, I'm getting to 265. I'm not nitpicking here, but is that where, are they half-trips? Is that's what's bumping that up to 286 from 265? I'm just trying to back into the number.
And you're...
And I might not be able to based on what's here, what I'm looking at.
So, okay, I understand. So the AM peak and the PM peak are broken out, but those, the total weekday trips encompass times outside of the...
Pass-through traffic from other people that could not be going there.
Well, it encompasses times outside of the peak. So the peak would be generally 7 to 9 or something like that in the morning, and 4 to 6 in the afternoon. So that doesn't encompass all the traffic.
Okay.
So that's why those numbers aren't necessarily adding up.
Right.
But what's typically studied in a traffic study are the peak hours, because that's where it's obviously the worst and have the potential for failures or poor level of service. So that's why they broke those out specifically.
Other questions for Chris?
Chris, do we know what kind of impact Glenrock Church has on traffic in that area? Because it would not have been considered during peak hours, because it's mainly going to be on a Sunday. But I also imagine that the people attending the services do have an impact to that road, similar to what I would think the Goddard School would have. And using that Harris, or do you see an increase in traffic through there? And you may not know the answer.
I don't have a comparison as far as what a church of that size would generate traffic wise, so I can't make that comparison.
And through the traffic analysis, I noticed when I've driven through here, trying to look at the property and trying to really understand this, coming from Dobie's Bridge at the bypass and going, I guess it's north, but going towards Walmart, trying to make a right-hand turn on Hair. That is a really tough hairpin turn. The buses have already torn up the road in that corner. Are there any planned improvements or changes? I know TIA doesn't require it, but how will that transition change?
This is coming from...
From Glenrock, basically, if you were turning right on the Hair.
Okay. It's something that we would look at. York County, that would be a York County SC DOT intersection, York County being Hair Road essentially at that location currently, and DOT being North Dobie's Bridge. It's something that they would consider as a part of the overall process. I have heard from York County as far as the TIA, and they didn't have any comments or issues based off the study. I have not heard from SC DOT, but that's something that generally would be considered if the project was to be built for.
Okay, because I know last time we discussed the possibility of like a right-turn lane or something there. Are we any further in the planning process to know what may be coming?
So this study would have determined if a right-turn lane was needed to meet the traffic needs. And generally speaking, DOT doesn't want to, not to speak for DOT, but they don't like adding turn lanes unless it is required based off traffic, because it does create a visual issue for folks that if they were coming out on Hair Road trying to turn right, you then have two lanes of traffic that you're having to deal with. So typically, turn lanes aren't something that they are for unless it's absolutely necessary for capacity reasons.
I've got a question. The way this is written, we're only considering annexing it.
Annexing?
Does it also, if we vote yes, we're voting for the day school too?
Well, here's, and I was gonna try to cover this. For all of you that are new to this issue or those that are gonna be watching later, the town was approached for annexation for the piece of property to build a Goddard School on this property. The current zoning for the property, it's in York County. It's not in the town, thereby the annexation. The zoning in the county allows for a daycare. Every zone inside the town allows for a daycare. So the annexation would be to allow the town to manage the development of the daycare. It would allow the daycare to gain water and sewer from the town, which actually, they can still do that if they're in the county, they just pay higher fee. So the decisions that this council and the planning commission and our staff are faced with are, is there demonstrated need for a daycare? The answer's yes, there is. Is the Goddard School proposal a good one? Is it a solid institution with the planning to be appropriate? Yes. Would it overtax the current infrastructure around it? And the answer from the traffic analysis, which a TIA is a traffic analysis, says no. From my experience, and I've said this to fellow council members, the people driving to the Goddard School are already driving somewhere else. So on my side of town, which I live on that side of town, those people are driving by me already. So we're going to see they're going to a different location if it's approved. The concern that I've expressed personally is that I don't want to see commercial start oozing off of the bypass. The bypass is appropriate for commercial growth. It is. That's why the property costs more. But a daycare is not a QT. It's a daycare for children. So we do, as council members, have to give full consideration. I believe we've been asked that. One of the issues, and I'm probably putting you on the spot back there, but hey, you showed up, was that .6 acre. I asked earlier today of my staff, could we zone it differently? And I've asked, could we do something about stubbing off the road so that it's a one-way road? I don't know why anybody would take their life into their hands to go down Hair Road and take a left on the bypass anyway. That doesn't make sense to me at all, to use it as a pass-through. That's dangerous. What are you gonna gain? 15 seconds instead of going to the light? I don't know. Have you considered that .6 acres? Please, please join the conversation.
Okay. As I mentioned before, I was pretty much obligated to take the six-tenths acres if I'm buying the property.
Yes, sir.
We really have no use for it.
So would you donate it to the town?
We could donate to the town, take a tax write-off, we could keep it and maybe get it zoned agricultural and put a deed restriction on it, so nothing else could be built on it. So we want to be a good member of the community, so we don't want to see development on there that's gonna block our site, and we don't want an ice war there any more than the residents do. So we're open to discussions with the city council or with neighbors, or however you want to do it, turn it into a park, turn it into a fountain. Right now, all we've, all we're submitting for permitting is to put a monument sign there, but we could just as easily move the monument sign back to the 3.4 acres and do something with that .6.
I personally think this is the exact type of discussion that finds compromise so that we can meet the needs of our constituents, both in providing a daycare which is needed and a good one, and that we're not putting the residents in that area at risk for future development that they would not be happy with.
And that's a lot of the concern that I've heard from most people. They're worried about that corner. I understand that if we do not accept this, as the mayor mentioned, they can gain access to water and sewer.
Build it anyway.
My father's not from here, he was up this past weekend, and we were riding towards, to get to Lowe's, and he looked at Baxter Village. He said, oh, that's in the town, right? And I said, no, the town could have had that, but they were gonna control it. And to add, this is 20 years. I was a sophomore, I was 19-years-old when that happened. And at that time, I think if you could sit those seven people right here tonight and ask them, would you want Baxter Village in the town then, that's knowing what's there now or not? What's the answer from my own? Yeah.
And we have about 20 kids right now that are in Massey, Waterside, White Grove, Oakland Point, that are all in that area that are making...
Drive to you.
Driving through downtown Fort Mill, or, excuse me, driving through Sutton Road and trying to get up the back way. So we anticipate that we're gonna lose those kids, 20, 25 kids, and that's not including the people that are inquiring about getting into the school. So we, there might be some traffic in that area, but we're actually gonna remove some of the traffic, because people are driving long distances, about seven miles to get from this to where the existing Goddard School is.
They're already driving their children to a daycare.
Yep.
So...
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Or a comment. It's my understanding, the reason you have to have highway commercial zoning is for the parking lot, you know?
I don't have to have it at all. I mean, we can, the highway commercial gives actually more stringent zoning requirements on us, on how we do development and how we do boundaries. We don't really care, as the mayor said, we can do the childcare center, the daycare, whether it be in residential zoning or in HC zoning. It behooves, I think, the neighbors for it to go HC, at least that segment of it, but I can see why they don't want that orphan parcel to be HC. And that's why I'm saying we're willing to...
And that concerns me. I'm with the White Grove, I'm right, I can almost see it. You know, I just, I think I would be happy if we could work something out.
Chris, what are the properties zoned around it, just kind of for the audience and others, you know, inquiring on this? So if you look at the properties to the right and in front of it.
Pull that up for you.
I put you on the spot, because I know this is, some of it, a good bit's county land, not on...
Most of it is county. So this is generally, and the property lines don't show up unfortunately, but most of it is already too, which is York County zoning, and so residential zoning classification. This piece here that doesn't have any color to it, that's highway commercial, that's in town. These pieces here that don't have color, and all this down here, that's highway commercial as well, in town. This corner here, which, these are BD1, that's a York County zoning designation, but it's a commercial zoning designation at the corner of Hair and the Parkway. So that's generally the surroundings of the site.
So the one that you just said, the last piece you referenced, it looks like construction's already beginning on that corner. I know it's county. Do we know what's coming there?
Therapy place for behavioral therapy and speech therapy.
Awesome.
For kids, so.
Not a bad thought. Okay.
Would it represent it from our Hair Road? Does this compromise, is that a good one?
Does it appeal?
It does.
Okay.
It certainly takes one of the worries off the table, correct?
That was my main concern. A lot of people could hear about it, White Grove, what, is it flashing sign or, you know, just what's gonna go there, you know, and mine too.
And I think the misunderstanding came from trying to protect the residents with more buffering, going with highway commercial, and that title kind of scares people off. So I think if we can find kind of a compromise as we move forward, if we move forward...
I like the idea of donating it to the town, and then we can work with you guys and make it a little walk park area, touch, you know, I know kids like to touch stuff. We can put those places where they have different textures and whatnot in there, we can do something like that in that little thing there, work in conjunction with them.
Can we work that out?
I don't know how you do it, but I'm sure we can do it.
Guy right there in the glasses, the guy sitting beside of him.
Okay, those two? Okay. So, yeah, we can do it on, you know, the zoning contingent, and then just say, we'll donate that, and I don't know how we figure out how to do that and work with the county.
Jamie, do you want to...
I amend my motion. I amend Old Business Item Number One to reflect that the Goddard School is looking to donate the small orphan piece of land to the town, to work in conjunction with the town, to oversee its development. As to the three, was it three?
3.4.
3.4 to go, as stated, in Old Business Number One originally.
Okay. Jamie has...
And do you want to keep that as a, move it to HC, or do you want to move it, keep it in residential, or how?
I like the restrictions HC has on it, and then you're contiguous with the property that's already in place, so we're not, we don't have a hodgepodge stuff working there.
Makes sense.
Do I have a second for Jamie's revised? Did we do that right or wrong?
At this point...
We have to vote down my first one and then vote in my second one.
Well, no, but I think at this point, it would be preferable, I think, to just go ahead and, given second reading to an ordinance you've already given the first reading to, I think you go ahead and approve it with the understanding that's on record right here, that this work will take place after the fact. I wouldn't go...
We can do that.
I wouldn't go monkeying with the ordinance at this point.
We can do that. We can do that. Do we have any further questions in regards to this?
And just really more for those that are here, the residents, and really just to not, do you understand? I know the hesitation for highway commercial, but you understand the difference between that and local commercial being that you get more of a buffer, you get more protection with highway?
Yes.
Okay.
But with, with the idea of it being donated to the town, it would still hold, the front piece would still hold the HC designation?
Until we change it.
Yeah, we're not in the business of development, so.
It might be a little pocket park there.
Yeah, we do have a park designation that it probably would change to, would be what my thought would be. But again, our planning team would work through that. But yeah, we're not building a QT there.
Yeah. I can't thank you enough for the graciousness with which you've been through this process.
Okay, thank you. We, as I said, we're, we're proud to be part of the community. We've been here for 10 years, and we see 10 more years. And we want to be an integral part and not, and be a good neighbor, not be a troublesome neighbor. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I?
Yes, please.
I held a conversation with Ms. Hamilton over the weekend, and I told her, I said, "I think it's better for the town to control what goes here than someone in McConnell's in York that don't even come across the river to Fort Mill." I don't, I've never met my county council representative, don't know who it is. I think I do, but I think the seven of us care a lot more about Fort Mill and, and looking out like we just worked out. And I, I looked at the website. Every one of the teachers on the website today, you know, college degrees, certifications, psychology. I mean, this isn't a dump going in, it's a class thing. It's something that can add to our community. I live in White Grove, I'm not wild about it. But at the same time, I would rather us control it than it go to the county, and, and that's where I will stand with this.
Before we vote, I'd like the takeaway to be simply that we do hear you. We do listen, and we do go about attempting to find a solution that brings about a win-win. This is a good opportunity for a good organization and good ownership to bring a service to that side of town we don't have. But it's also something that we don't want to just say, "Done. We listen to you, and we want to do the best we can for all our constituents." So, for the-
Just real quick, kind of piggybacking on Chris's comment and Gwen's as well. We appreciate you speaking, and we do care. I mean, we go to church with you. I'm very proud of you, by the way, for speaking. You know, your kids go to daycare, went to school with us. You know, you are part of our community, and it, we do care very passionately. A lot of decisions we make, there are, you know, welcome to my home. There are consequences, children, good and bad for every decision we make. And unfortunately, we can't always make everybody happy. But I think there can be a kumbaya moment like we're having here where we can all kind of look and make the best of the situation. So, we appreciate everybody working together with us.
Thank you, all of you.
Thank you. All right, with that said, Jamie, you got anything? You keep looking like you got something you need to add. All right. We have a motion in place to approve old business item number one, and we have a second. Hearing that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Thank you. That's the way it ought to work. New business items. New business item number one, first reading and public hearing, and ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the town of Fort Mill. Article six, administration enforcement penalties and fees. Section four, temporary uses and special events to establish requirement for mobile food vendors. Chris Pettit, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number one.
Got a motion to accept, and two seconds. Uh, Chris?
And mayor, just as information, this is a public hearing, so we'll need to hold that out. Either before or after my presentation.
Oh, I gotcha.
And I'm happy to present if you'd like me to do that.
So, you want me to open the public hearing first, is what I'm hearing. I think that makes sense. Do you? Or do you want to talk about it first, then open the public here?
I can present first, and then if folks want to talk.
Who's on first?
I'll go ahead.
Somebody talk.
Yeah. Please, Chris, proceed.
Sure. Mayor, this, this ordinance was written as a request of council to establish regulations for mobile food vendors, but I'm gonna call them food trucks probably a few times. They're, they're kind of one and the same. So, the intent of this text amendment was to formally establish a process by which mobile food vendors are to go through the approval and permitting process. We, we do have more and more folks asking for, "How do I do this?" Or they allow. I, I don't think food trucks are going anywhere for the current time being. So, we did want to formally establish the process that they go through, and so the ordinance does that. It authorizes the planning director to establish the application forms and procedures and submit all requirements for such. It also establishes a number of locational and operational requirements. I'm happy to go through some of those if you like, but they were included in the ordinance in your agenda packet. But the planning commission did hear this request at their December meeting, and they did recommend in favor of approval with two modifications. Those being, one, there was a, a condition about the locational requirements as far as how far a food truck vendor would have to operate from a legally established restaurant. It was a little confusing the way it was written in the planning commission version, so we did clarify that, and that modification has been included in the draft ordinance before you. And then also, there was the addition of a requirement that the property owner and any applicable homeowners association, property owners association, or similar entity must provide their approvals as a part of the application made to the town. So, those were the two modifications proposed by the planning commission, and again, they are included in the draft that's before you. And staff does recommend in favor of approval of the amendment as drafted before you today. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have before the public hearing.
Chris and I are gonna grow up and be auctioneers at one time.
And Chris, you guys didn't just make this up as you go. You looked at other communities and mimicked what they had on their books. So, this is pretty universal as it goes across.
We made it up. No, we, we did. We, we worked with a consultant as a part of the UDA process to, to get a, a lot of the bones of this. And then we did refer to other jurisdictions in the state that are, that have used similar regulations. So, we follow, City of Aiken, I think, we followed up with them, and they had a good ordinance that they've said has been working. City of Greenville, City of Rock Hill. So, we, we took some other folks and made it fit to the needs of Fort Mill, and that's, that's kind of how we came up with the text there.
I kind of have a redundant question. Who inspects food trucks? Does DHEC inspect food trucks?
DHEC does inspect them. Our farm marshal would inspect them.
And who's liable if somebody gets sick off one of the food trucks?
The food truck owner.
How about us? If we approve them?
Nope. It would be a DHEC, it would be a DHEC property, property owner or food truck owner. I think we would be maybe fourth on that list.
Same as if we were doing an event or even a restaurant. We're, we're not owning it.
Yeah, well, that was my concern when we had Strawberry Festival and some of the vendors.
We, we don't, we don't regulate the, the help piece of that. We actually, as a part of this, do require that they provide the DHEC approval just to kind of, you know, provide some ease to us that they've gone through the appropriate channels they need to with DHEC. But that, that's provided just as information. They have to post that when they're operating as a part of the state requirements.
Further questions?
And for the, we're not saying that the HOAs have to come in and get okay to have a food truck service. We're saying that when the food truck goes and applies for the applications, that the HOA says, "Yes, we are having a food truck event there." It's not on their shoulders, it's solely on the food truck. 'Cause I've had a couple of people come blow back, like, "We don't all have food trucks in our neighborhood anymore?" No, that's not it at all. It's solely on the food truck guys to make sure that they have all their documentation, so we know where they are. If something does go bad, then we know where to send the fire truck or the ambulance or whatnot.
Correct, yeah. The, the intent with that piece was so that, you know, homeowners associations certainly much more in tune to what a neighborhood's needs are and, and what's going on in the neighborhood than the, the town can be. So, we want to have their blessing to approve a food truck in those, their area jurisdiction.
And to stay on that path of thinking, are we planning a communication to the HOAs? And this may be more Davey and communications side, to let them know about this ordinance being passed as well as the school district? Because the school seems to have food trucks on a regular basis.
We, we will shoot this out to all of those folks that we know of that may have food trucks from time to time. Certainly the Greenway, anybody that kind of does an event. LASH, LPL, those larger folks that bring food trucks in, school district. So, we will push this out upon approval to, to make sure that folks are aware of the process that they have to go through to get approvals.
And how does the food trucks that contain alcoholic beverages, how does that differ from what you would see in the restaurant or anything? I mean, is it still gonna be the normal, you just show an ID and you can order a beer?
The way the draft is written, food trucks would not be allowed to sell alcoholic beverages.
Okay, I wondered about that.
And that was, that was some language that, that has been taken from other jurisdictions. So, we, we took that from others.
To your point, I don't see food trucks going away. I mean, this is just an evolution of the ice cream truck we all grew up with. It was stranger danger vans sometimes. But I think it's something definitely will have to be massaged over time. I'm sure it'll have a few growing pains for a few years as we all learn. I mean, saw on Facebook that Waffle House is now getting a food truck, so. If you read everything, if you believe everything you read, so.
Not me.
Okay. No, thank you.
Food truck will be as nauseous as their restaurants are.
As the restaurants or residents?
Maybe they'll pump it out of the speaker like they do the ice cream trucks.
The smell.
All right. We have a motion to accept, and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No?
No, 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 we got a-
Whoa, whoa. Public hearing. So, we don't vote before the public hearing? Would anyone like to make comment? No one signed in to make comment, so we're gonna open a public hearing in regards to new business item number one. And I'm gonna give you guys flight signs, you know, keep me in order. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now closed. We have no public comment. We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. Do we have any additional questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Please bear with me. We are trying a new method to put the public hearings adjacent to the actual issue so that we're not separating them by seven or eight levels. So, it'll take me a meeting or two to become better at this. Davey, I was thinking about the time. Would you like to insert the introduction at this point?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
Council members, I'd like to, I am pleased to introduce to you our new public works director for the town of Fort Mill, Mr. Brian Harris. He comes to us from the city of Lancaster, where he was, served them for a little over 11 years and for the past eight as their supervisor in the sanitation and maintenance department. We're very excited to have him. He's done a great job in just a short period of time he's been here. So, we're looking forward to big things in the public works department.
Awesome. Welcome aboard. We're so happy to have you.
Glad to be here.
Very happy to have you.
So, you from LA too, huh?
They have an expressway now. And I hate it. Yeah. Did you play football?
I did.
Where did you play?
Wingate universe.
Did you? That's awesome. We're all sports fanatics, so that works for us.
I was gonna say Clemson game, Tom.
We're delighted.
That's why I sit in the back over there.
We're delighted to have you. I, I hope that you find the town of Fort Mill and its administration to be as delightful as we do. And if you ever have any problems, you've got your man right there. He will take care of you, and we're, we're just thrilled to have you.
Glad to be here again.
Thank you so much.
And I just wanted to let you know, everybody's been real helpful.
Good.
Treated me like family, so, and I appreciate it.
Well, you are. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Thank you, Dave.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll now move to new business item number two, first reading and public hearing. I'm paying attention this time. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the town of Fort Mill, Article one in general, so as to add a new section to be called Section Eight, Transportation Impact Analysis. We will do a motion first.
Make a motion to accept new business item number two?
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Chris, this is something we asked for, so it should be very short and to the point.
I can do that, maybe. This ordinance establishes process parameters and requirements for TIA's. When they're required, when you would get them, how they would be done by engineers. Really, the goal was to be a little more consistent on, on how they're done and how they are presented to you, and get that information to you earlier in the process that you can use that information in your decision-making. This is a slightly lengthy ordinance that was developed with engineering folks that are much smarter than I am as far as those parameters and everything like that. So, happy to try to go into detail if you would like, but generally speaking, the planning commission recommended in favor of approval, and staff did as well.
Consistency is key, and information earlier is always better. So, thank you for working on something we have requested, and we appreciate it. Any questions for Christopher? Hearing none?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, thank you. We'll open a public hearing for anyone that has comment question. Crickets. Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Now, any further questions before we vote? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. It's gonna take me a while. New business item number three, first reading and ordinance adopting a third amendment to the town of Fort Mill Capital Improvements Plan for fiscal year 2015 and 16 through fiscal year 2019 and 2020. Chris Pettit, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number three.
Thank you, Jamie. All right. Chris?
Mayor, this is, the CIP was originally adopted in conjunction with the enactment of the impact fees. The CIP is being, the request is to amend the CIP to really accomplish three main things. Change the name of Waterside Park to Banks Athletic Park. Adding the proposed amphitheater project in Walter Y. Elijah Park, and updating some cost estimates and timelines for Fire Station Number Two. The overall intent of this is to give council the flexibility to use impact fee funds for these projects if so chosen, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Chris, what do we have to do after this to let constituents know? We'll just update the website with this information, is that correct?
We will update the website with the updated CIP.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Further questions? Just an FYI about capital improvements. We recently had a news article that covered a great deal of information in regards to the capital improvements plan. I think the one thing, you know, I certainly am happy I don't write news articles, but the one thing that I think is terribly important is there were very little timelines associated with the capital improvement projects that were listed. Some of those projects are long-term, some are short-term, and we and staff and council are working diligently on getting some order to that list and seeing if we can't put more information that will make it a little bit easier to digest and understand. Okay? All right.
I saw that there was a couple of people that said there wasn't any road improvements on our capital improvement plan, and as I'm staring at this thing, I'm seeing a little over a dozen. We are restricted to the roads that we can operate on, but the roads that we do own and operate, we are trying to keep them able to passable and, and update as much as we can. So, if anybody was questioning that.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think information is important for those that are watching, listening, or will. So, we do not have a public hearing associated with this one, so we can go straight to a vote. We do have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. New business item number four, first reading. An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan for the town of Fort Mill so as to incorporate an amended version of the town of Fort Mill Capital Improvements Plan as an addendum to the priority investment element. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number four.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right. Chris?
Mayor, the CIP is adopted by reference in the comp plan, so with the amendment of the CIP, this is an amendment of the comp plan to update the reference. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
This is just housecleaning.
Yeah, it is housecleaning. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. New business item number five, first reading, an ordinance abandoning and transferring an existing water and sewer easement to the property owners of property located at the intersection of Steel Street and Tom Hall Street affecting York County tax parcel numbers 0200425012, 0200425020, 020042510 and 11, and 0200425008. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number five.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. Davey, would you like to address us on this one?
Yes, ma'am. There's an easement that runs across the rear part of these parcels that was associated with a previous above-ground water storage tank. That tank has since been removed and the water line that's in the easement has been caved. So it's no longer in use. We have gone in and capped it off, and, but the property owner now is asking that we have the easement itself removed from the, from these parcels. So we need, we come to council getting, we need two readings on this, and this would be the first reading.
So we no longer require the easement to access a water tank that doesn't exist anymore?
That's correct.
Is that correct? We have no other town need for that particular easement across that property, is that correct?
No, ma'am, because this easement goes from Steel Street into our cemetery, so it
We have ample access to the cemetery, otherwise.
Okay?
No other utilities currently run in that area either?
It is capped off a little bit?
It's capped off down on the Steel Street end.
I think they already did it in the apartment.
Yeah, the other ends we capped off, probably capped off when the tank was removed, but
So were you responsible for the pipe that's in the ground?
No, that's, that's the property owner.
And we are only giving up the easement right. We do not own the land that the place is in. We're relinquishing our easement, so people know we're not giving the land away.
Right.
And no liability on our part since this is done.
I think we're good. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. We will now move to the information and discussion portion of our meeting. Information discussion item number one, wastewater treatment plant phase two, report on receiving of bids on 1-8-19. Greg Rushing. Congratulations.
Thank you, I will gloat if we have time. I'm pretty good at gloating.
He's wearing Tennessee orange.
You see some orange. Not going to go into detail after that.
It was a good game, you deserved it.
I left a memo in front of everyone.
Yes, you did.
Detailing the bids that we received on January 8th for the Phase Two wastewater treatment plant project. In my years, I've never seen this distribution of bids this close together. It's less than 2% error here, error difference from low bid to high bid. I think that's very indicative of how tight the specs were and our previous offerings of different processes and retaining those prior to this bid. At this time, they are higher than the engineer's estimate. Certainly, the material costs are going up, and we're talking specifically steel, and the work that's going on in the area does drive labor rates up as well. We are already in contact with the low bidder via Hazen and Sawyer and are trying to value engineer some cost savings there. Of course, I can't guarantee that, but I think there is room there to evaluate uncertainties that the contractors may have. Again, we have a meeting scheduled Wednesday with town staff, Hazen, and contractors' representatives to do more of that. And the financing calendar, I believe we have those certifications due on the 22nd. I don't think there's any problem with that, but we don't have any idea how that's going to finish up. But we will report on that as soon as we do.
And we put in the contract, we will not accept any change orders, right?
I'd love to put that little stipulation in there.
Yeah, let me know when you find one of those.
Right. The change order process is much more difficult going through the SRF than it would be just self-funding, I'll give you that.
Greg, you've shepherded this project so nicely, thank you, and the work that Shante has done to support every project and all of the issues that we have moving to new technological systems. Hats off to you. You're just doing a great job. We appreciate you, I'm sure the town appreciates you, and we look forward to hearing from you after the 22nd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for not wearing a bright orange shirt tonight.
Thanks for keeping the paw at home. All right, we do have an executive session this evening. Please note that council may take action on executive session items listed on this agenda when we come back into public session. However, we cannot vote in executive session. We do not vote in executive session. We do have two items, a discussion of consideration of an appointment to the York County Natural Gas Authority Board and discussion of items incidental to contractual agreements in relation to the Canova Farms LLC Development Agreement. With that, I'll, you need me, Davey?
Just once, just for a second.
Yes, sir.
While we're stealing information before we move into the second session. I did also want to make another announcement tonight.
Okay.
While this is my first public opportunity to announce the hiring of our assistant town manager.
I wondered about that.
Yes, and so we didn't have a meeting in late December, but Chris Pettit, whose name is all over this agenda, accepted the position of assistant town manager, has been with us for a few weeks now, serving in that role, and he's actually serving in dual roles right now as our planning director, as you see on our agenda tonight, but we're in the process of seeking out our next planning director. But just wanted to welcome Chris aboard. Again, he's done a wonderful job in the time he's been with us, so we're glad to have him.
Congratulations, Chris. I personally couldn't be happier with the way that our town staff is shaping up and moving forward, and I got nothing but happy thoughts for 2019 and beyond. So that's a good thing, thank you.
It's been great to see the promotions from within in many different areas, and I know Shante's had a couple on her side too, so it's been great to see people staying in the family.
Awesome. All right, I need a motion to go into executive session, please. A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. We will return shortly. All right, I need a motion to return to general session.
So move.
Say aye.
I have a motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Let the record reflect that no vote nor decision was made in executive session. Okay. Mr. Huntley? For the good of the whole?
What?
Round tabling.
Oh, is it the end of it? I have a couple comments.
You'll be aye, you'll be aye.
I doubt that very seriously. We had an incident in our neighborhood about two weeks ago. I had been up here to town hall and I went home and sitting in front of my house was an ambulance, the fire chief's car, the assistant fire chief's car, and two police cars. And Chip, our fire chief was there, and I said, Chip, what's going on? He said, I can't tell you. I know Chip as well as anybody, and I thought, I really appreciated that he was not going to tell me what happened. It wasn't my house, it was neighbor's house.
He'd probably told you if it was your house.
He wouldn't have told me, I'd have torn the door down getting inside. Second thing, New Year's Eve, I went out to one of our local restaurants, not realizing they closed at 6 o'clock on New Year's Eve, and it was 10 minutes to 6 when I got there, and I had a to-go order. And while they fixed my order, I was talking to the lady that cleaned the tables off, and then one of the Fort Mill policemen came up and started harassing me. Don't know why he did that, but I harassed him back, and when he left, she said, you know, Fort Mill's got the nicest policemen. About a half a dozen come in here in the morning after their shift, midnight shift, and they're just so nice, and the few times that we've called them, they're here, Johnny on the spot, and I really felt good about that. We need to keep our friends at unity in mind, not only do they have a million dollar fire, but this past Sunday, they couldn't even use their main sanctuary because they were afraid the chandeliers were going to fall. But they've been through a lot here lately.
Did you build them? That's not good.
And what I would like to point out is the gentleman's not here, but most of our traffic is passed through traffic. If we had no houses in Fort Mill, there'd be a traffic jam at 8 o'clock in the morning and another at 5:00 in the afternoon. If you don't believe it, just follow some of them. That's it.
Thank you, and I agree with you. Jamie?
I just want to congratulate all the new members on the school board. I saw that they all were sworn in. I look forward to working with them throughout the year. I see a lot of great things in our town's future, 2019, 2020, and forward. I also want to congratulate our new council member, our new county council member, Joel Hamilton, for his position. I know he's going to represent our area very well. I look forward to working with them also, and congratulations to Michael Johnson, he finally got his position as head of the county council, and I know that we can count on him to represent us as well as the Rock Hill area, and maybe he can look at that traffic count instead of population count when they DB out money for roads, that would be appreciated. Put that at the top of your list when you first get there. I want to say a big thank you, Davey, I had a personal issue last week, and our town staff is awesome. I was up in New York and a phone call answered a bunch of questions and ratified everything that was going on in my neighborhood. Thank you for doing that. That being said, the, my aunt passed away. And she was a great lady. She was the first female engineer that was hired by Kodak.
Wow.
She worked for them for 26 years, and then she went and worked at a school for the blind. And she was a real, a real inspiration and a glass ceiling breaker. So don't ever tell your girls that they can do something because they're a girl. Tell them they can do it because they're awesome. So thank you.
It'll bring tears in my eyes to say this, but I have to say congratulations to Clemson for the national championship. I do want to do a call out though for Dwayne McLean, he went to high school with us, and it's a true inspirational story that is now coaching for Clemson. York County Natural Gas had a big influence in his life for many years, giving him the flexibility to be able to work part-time so that he could go back to get his degree and live the dream that he and his family have prayed about, literally prayed about in church for many years. We had several, I think cheerleaders, band members, several people there representing Fort Mill in addition to Dwayne. So even though there is no orange in our house, I will say we were pulling for Clemson that night. Also, it has been brought up, and Davey, I want us to make sure we really look at this quickly before something does happen, but Main Street, the crosswalk now the Impeccable Pig is open, people crossing pedestrian traffic at the bottom and top of Main, we really need to move on this very quickly before something happens that we don't want to talk about. And speaking of that and kind of the emotional side of things, this week is a year anniversary since Officer Doty's passing, so full remember our officers and the families affected by this. I'll wear black and blue tonight in honor of them.
I didn't wear black and blue, I can't even say it, but I did have it written down to acknowledge that last year was a great year, but it was a hard year. We not only lost Detective Doty and our town grief, but we also lost a young woman at the Peach Stand. And I was at the hospital welcoming the birth of my first grandson, which is next week when the Peach Stand shooting took place. These are not things that happen in our small town very often, if ever, and I think with all tragedy, it has certainly drawn us together even more so as a community and as loving individuals that care deeply about everyone we serve. So I also think last week was honor our police force week, and I say that to all first responders. Nobody goes alone to any of these events, they all help each other, and then we back them up. So I thank all of them, and I do honor the folks that we have. Chris, welcome. You have served us so well as a planner and an assistant planner. This is, you're very well deserving of the opportunity to serve as assistant manager, and we're very proud of you. Thank you for working so hard for all of us. And I think we've got the dream team in place right now, and I'm pretty happy with it, so.
We're going to make a difference now.
We've got Virginia, Davey, and Chris, we can rule the world, guys, I'm just telling you. So thank you for all that you do. Thank you to each of my council members. It's been three years, starting my fourth year right now, and I couldn't, I couldn't have, yeah, I couldn't have decided or told anybody what it would be like at all. It's entirely different than you would ever assume, but I think we're on to making some significant strides for our community, and I'm proud of everything we do, very proud. So thank you.
I want to offer condolences to the officer that lost his father.
Yes.
And thank all of our staff and everyone. It's been a great year. I have my number five great-grandchild that will be born this week.
Great, great friend.
Great-grandchild. Yeah, I'm getting old. I'm almost as old as Larry.
A few gray hairs.
Appreciate everybody.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, hard to leave 2019, you know, keep flipping those years. I remember my grandfather told, turned 90, I gave him his birthday cake, and he's 90 years old, and he shook his head, and I said, why are you shaking your head? He said, because it's called by us so fast. You know, and I thought, man, this guy's 90 years old. Kind of on a personal note, something, I've always wanted to read through the Bible, cover to cover, it's like a bucket list thing. I know, I know, Larry, you've probably read it a hundred times by now, right?
He was there when it was written.
So anyhow, I got through, I got through the New Testament last year, and I'm starting in Genesis this year, but I was reading the other night about when Joseph was sold into slavery by his brothers and how Pharaoh put him in charge of all of Egypt. And this was like Saturday night, I'd already watched some basketball, it's like 11 o'clock, so I'm looking, this is 45 minutes later, and I'm just like, man, this is really interesting. And, but how he forgave his brothers that sold him into slavery, and the first time there was a great famine in the land, he came and they gave him silver for the grain that they needed, but he put it back and didn't tell them that that was his brother, that they had sold him to slavery, and they came back again, and he went another room and wept, and then came and revealed his identity and forgave him for selling him into slavery, and I thought, man, you know, that's a prime example of how we need to live our lives if we've ever been wronged by someone, or maybe we've wronged someone, and need to go to that person and ask for forgiveness. You know, I was sitting there thinking about, what have I ever said to my kids that is probably not right, or my spouse, or my parents over the years, you know? So anyway, just a little plug of a little bucket list thing I'm working on. I don't know if I'll get through it in 2019.
Yes, you will.
But I'm trying, so anyway, that's about all we've got.
Good for you. Trudy Bean?
I'm in the same category that Lisa's in, our house is garnet and black, but happy for the Tigers. And our grandson does go to Clemson, and he is in the band, so he was able to participate in all the activities, and he was very, very pleased about that. And I have to say, have to agree with everything each of you have already said as far as Officer Doty and remembering our officers and just, you know, this is such a wonderful place to live. Of course, I've lived here just like Ronnie has, actually, we went to school together, and I just wouldn't want to live anywhere else.
Was he a troublemaker?
Of course he was. Of course he was.
Okay, with that, I'll certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second, third.
Motion to adjourn, second, third, everybody, please say.
Aye.
Aye. And anybody opposed? All right, thank you so much.